Okay. Welcome, everybody, joining us at home. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, August 25th, 2014. I'll call this meeting to order. If we could all please rise, I'll have the invocation and lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we deliberate the issues before us this evening, grant us a portion of your wisdom that we serve the citizens of this great city in a way that would be pleasing to them. We ask for a special blessing tonight for those in military service or for those who serve us in public safety, be it police or fire. And we ask for a special blessing for those citizens tonight in Ferguson, Missouri, that we understand as being a community of people that can be such a fragile thing between government and its citizens. Help us to always be responsible and respectful of that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of great presentations this evening. I always like the positive things in government, and this is one of those times. I'm going to start with, because I don't want to overshadow the second one with the first one. So if council will indulge me, I'm going to change the order so that we can introduce the new employee first and then talk about the more important issue as far as giving this award. So Chief, would you like to, and this will be incredibly different for most of us that are used to meeting our new employees, but...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time, members of council. Coming in the door now is our detective, James Matthew Fox, with our newest member of the department, K-9 Rena. Detective Fox graduated with K-9 Rena on June 10th, 2014. Is a narcotic detector dog. She is fully certified. And Detective Fox is going to come up here and let you guys take a look at her and talk a little bit about some of her early accomplishments and some of the training he had to go through to bring her onboard. And you will notice he's wearing a state police shirt. He currently is assigned to the State Police Drug Task Force. He's our employee, but he's assigned to the task force. That's the outfit he wears when he's doing joint operations.
That's great.
So Detective Fox?
Anybody here that's afraid of dogs?
Anybody out there?
Retire.
Okay. Come on up.
First thing I have is a book that explains our certifications.
And he likes the, likes the attorney?
You got you, Wayne.
We're checking him out. She didn't point.
Come on up. Hey, detective, if you could, there, nobody at home is going to be able to hear you unless you're up here at the podium. And we do want them to hear and we do want them to see.
Again, he explained that I went through a class. That class was about 11 weeks. Her and I both have been well-trained in the detection of narcotics after 11 weeks. Is there any questions that, I mean, any direction you want me to go?
I think, yeah. Just tell us how that, like I said, this is a first for Pecosin, as far as I can remember, Chief.
And she was, first, she was donated to the police department. And we did dedicate Detective Fox's time to the training. And we have purchased some equipment, but because we're with the task force and she is used for task force operations, Virginia State Police and the fund that funds that task force have paid for quite a bit of our equipment for her. So it's been relatively a limited cost out of our budget, mostly his salary while he was in the training school. So it's a great resource for us to use with the officers on traffic stops, for the task force operations, and to be part of the team when we do our random checks at the schools and those kinds of things. So she will supplement all of that that we do, because currently, when we do that, we have to bar dogs from other jurisdictions, so.
Yeah. The other night at training, you know, we didn't see her, so...
Correct.
You know, I would hope that she's part of that as well.
She's not, she's not a search and rescue dog. She's just a narcotics dog, so she doesn't do, she's not a patrol dog, as they're often called.
She's scary, though.
Yeah, but she's, she's still a young dog. And we did even have money donated to build, to build a kennel at Detective Fox's home where she stays. And so he cares for her 24/7.
You said she's young. How old is she?
She's about two years old. She's very friendly, very, very interactive with my family, loves the children. There's some pictures of her with children in the community in that book. This book is, what you're flipping through, if you go directly to the little tab that says K-9 Rena, it gives you her statistics to date. It gives you her training certificate. It explains a little bit about her training and mine. And, you know, I mean, she was on the road for, what, about two weeks, Chief, before she went through, you know, a major medical issue and put her out for a little while. And yet, in those two weeks, she took nearly 10,000 grams of marijuana and then a few ounces of cocaine off the streets. Just in that, yeah, just in that time. So we hope to get back to work as soon as we can and maximize what we can take off the streets.
I think we'll do that as soon as, I think the vice mayor wanted to pet the dog.
Yeah. I don't like the dog.
Is she wanting to work or is she just excited about...
She's very excited all the time. However, she knows that when I get this leash and this uniform, she thinks she's at work. She wants to go to work.
It looks like she's wanting to work.
She's toy-driven. She's not food-driven, which means that her reward is always going to be a toy. And the process is, through training, she was trained to find the toy, not really the drug.
Okay.
Right? We soaked her toys in the odor of drugs. There are the five drugs. We soaked her toys in those odors. Then we hid those toys and let her find them. So when she's out there searching a car or searching a building, a locker, whatever else, she thinks she's looking for her toys. And she is, she's looking for her toys. However, when she alerts, she's telling me that the odor of narcotics are there. And then she's rewarded with that toy and hopefully I can sneak it, you know, sneak the toy in so that she thinks it's coming from wherever she alerted.
Okay.
How about that?
How does she alert?
Her alert is, well, the alert and the response are two different. She's a passive alert dog, which means that she's not going to get aggressive, she's not going to tear things up. She's passive alert, which means she will simply turn her head, her breathing pattern will change. She arches her back, her ears point backwards, and once I see that, that's her alert. Now, her response is totally different. Her response is a trained response that follows that alert. Her response is simply to sit down and look at me until, you know, I reward her for the fun.
Does she have to go through any kind of re-training at any particular time?
Yes, sir. There is a monthly training that we go to, and it produces, helps us out with that retraining. And then every year, we have to re-learn.
And I guess dogs like her are not, like, service dogs where I know you're not supposed to pet them, but you can give permission for children to pet her?
She's very friendly. Out on the street, I wouldn't typically invite children to come up and pet her. However, if they were to run up, you know, and just start petting her, she's not going to, you know, do anything drastic. She's very used to my children tugging on her and stuff like that, so.
I think what you talked about with the training with the toy, that's very interesting. I never knew how it was done. And so I can see why it's kind of like play to her. That's great.
Everything is play. Everything is play. You know, we're working on, you know, it's continuous work.
Right.
Every day that she comes to work is, is continuous training. She just wants to get out and do something, and I've got all this paperwork to do and all the other, you know, the crazy stuff to take care of her and training, and it's aggravating for me to have to sit here and listen to her whine because she wants to go out and sort herself.
Okay, well, what I can do is promise Lena that up in the city manager's office, in addition to the caramels that they have for the mayor, we'll have some, we'll have some milk bones up there, and she can come up there.
I love going up there and eating chocolates, so.
Well, thank you very much for bringing her, and it's, it's great to know. And like I said, I know y'all have been challenged for many, many years with when you needed a dog, calling a neighbor in jurisdiction and, or the State Police and having that asset. So we're glad that you got that asset for yourself. We're looking forward to a lot of years of prosperity from her, and what a great animal. And thank you for bringing her tonight.
Well, thank you all for having us.
Thanks.
If you keep looking at Dave, you might go check him out.
He's out of the lawyer.
I got Clive.
I wanted to have that fun, but before, we do something truly amazing and...
Do you want Cliff to do his other piece now?
Oh, um...
Cliff, why don't we just wait on yours?
Yeah, let me, let me come back to yours, Cliff, if you'll give me one second. What I want to do is do a special achievement recognition, and I would like Ms. Amanda Brooke Chandler to join me up there at that podium. And I want to talk to everybody about a young lady who has definitely overcome adversity and challenge, and a story that's worth telling and something that the mayor gets to do that's fun. Right here, so everybody can see you. Thank you for coming this evening. What I'd like to do is tell everybody that we're giving tonight an award of special achievement, and this is to Amanda Brooke Chandler. And I'm going to tell you this story, and I'm going to tell you this story basically by reading straight from the recognition, which is so well-done. This is a special achievement recognition to Amanda Brooke Chandler, the 2014 Miss Amazing Virginia Teen. And it says, "Whereas Amanda Brooke Chandler was given a diagnosis as a baby of never being able to walk or talk. And whereas Amanda Brooke Chandler, a rising junior at Pecosin High School, has proven this to be incorrect in that she now is able to play baseball with Virginia District Seven's Challenger League and participates in the Key Club, Teen Advisory Club, and Polar Plunge for Special Olympics. And whereas Amanda Brooke Chandler participated in the Miss Amazing Pageant for Ladies with Special Needs, which highlights ability, not disability, and was crowned 2014 Miss Amazing Teen. And whereas Amanda Brooke Chandler participated in and was a finalist in the national pageant held in Omaha, Nebraska. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Pecosin City Council, do recognize Amanda Brooke Chandler, 2014 Miss Amazing Virginia Teen, for this outstanding accomplishment and for special recognition that she has brought upon herself and the city of Pecosin." Thank you so much for, for showing us how to live and how to take on adversity and challenge. And this plaque is for you. And if you'd like to say anything at all, you are welcome to.
Karen?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for everything I did. I'm going to take this home and hang it on my wall.
Sure, council would love to shake your hand. Can you go just right around the front and...
Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
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 Great job.
Congratulations.
If we can pause for just a minute, we're going to take a photo op right here.
Y'all want, you want, or nothing going on here? I wanted to make sure that, you know, you didn't have to text it to us.
He'll see you on Facebook, yeah.
I'm sorry, Chief. I know that your, your subject's important, too, but...
She's prettier than you.
Well, let's get right down to it.
Members of council, thank you again for taking time for us to talk tonight. As you probably know, hundreds of children across the city are anxiously waiting to start a school next Tuesday. So this is an excellent time for, I think, for us to revisit a couple of issues regarding school safety, particularly school bus safety for children who are loading and unloading on buses in our city. We do have a recurring issue with folks understanding the rules regarding stopping for a school bus that's loading and unloading children, particularly on With Creek Road where we have the suicide lanes. So tonight, I'd like to take a moment just to go over the law, show some pictures, answer any questions you have, and then we're going to leave some handouts with council, with the city manager's office to give out to citizens who request them, so we can make sure that we have done our best to try to inform our citizens what they're required to do when our school buses are moving throughout the city, picking up and dropping off our children before and after school. To begin with, Code of Virginia says that vehicles are required to stop when approaching from any direction any school bus which has stopped on a highway, a private road, or school driveway for the purpose of taking on or discharging children, the elderly or mentally or physically handicapped persons, and shall remain stopped until all the persons are clear of the highway, the private road, the school driveway, and the bus is back in motion. Any person violating this foregoing is guilty of reckless driving. The driver of a vehicle, however, need not stop when approaching a school bus if the school bus is stopped on the other roadway of a divided highway, on an access road, or on a driveway, when the other roadway, access road, or driveway is separated from the roadway on which he is driving by a physical barrier or an unpaved area. And I'll define that for you as we go forward. But first, let's talk about reckless driving. Reckless driving is a Class 1 misdemeanor in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And if you are issued a summons for reckless driving in regard to this particular charge, that can result in confinement in jail for up to 12 months, a fine of $2,500 or both, and six demerit points on your driver's license. So it's a very serious charge, and it's, and it should be, because we're talking about the safety of our children. There's also a civil law in the Code of Virginia that allows a citizen, a bus driver, or some other person, 10 days to go to a magistrate and obtain a civil warrant for someone who has passed a school bus in violation of the previous code I showed you. And it's, it's really important that citizens understand the difference between the reckless driving charge and the civil penalty, because it says, "If it's issued within 10 days of the alleged violation, proof that the motor vehicle described in the summons was operated in violation of this section, together with proof that the defendant was at the time of such violation the registered owner of the vehicle, not the driver. If the car is registered to you, it creates a rebuttable presumption that you were the driver." So a citizen can actually go to a magistrate and obtain a civil warrant to charge someone for failing to stop for a school bus. We do have a process where we facilitate this with school bus drivers when they make an observation and there are no police in the area. And we document that using a form, and we work with Mr. Pappas from the School Division to bring those forward so we can take them to the magistrate and prosecute those cases civilly if, if we have a recurring problem in a particular area. And the penalty for that is a $250 fine. So we're talking about divided highways or streets. In the picture above, you can see that there is a divided highway. Certainly, the motorists that are traveling on the same side of the street as the school bus depicted here must stop. But the drivers on the other side are allowed to continue because the area between the divided highway is not paved. There's grass there. So you're not required to stop if it is unpaved. Now, when it comes to intersections, all three vehicles you see here must stop for the bus, all directions, no, there's no, no exception. This is a situation where the school bus has control of the intersection until the children have loaded or unloaded and it's gone back into motion. Now, here we have a situation that we see often on With Creek Road. We have a center turn lane, sometimes referred to as a suicide lane. All motorists must stop, even in the center turning lane, and remain stopped until all children are clear of the highway, because the center lane is paved. Just because it's that, it's five lanes wide is, has, has nothing to do with it. It's the fact that it's not a divided highway in terms of what the code says when it talks about an unpaved or a barrier. That lane is not a barrier. It is an open roadway, and all vehicles on, on every lane must stop in this situation. And just to remind people what that looks like, that's a picture similar to what you see on With Creek Road. So when we have these type of situations where you have that center lane is paved, vehicles on both sides of the street of the divided highway must stop and wait until the bus completes its loading or unloading and begins to move again. And I think this is where we have some confusion, and we'd like citizens to understand that based on complaints we receive from bus drivers and our random patrols in the morning and afternoon, we are looking for this particular violation. It's, it's extremely dangerous for the children to be getting out and crossing With Creek Road when we have vehicles that are continuing to speed, particularly because it's a 35 mile an hour zone as well, so the speeds are a little bit faster than what you're seeing in the residential zones. So that, that tends to be the place where you will find us doing the most enforcement because of the, the danger of the speed. I do have handouts at your desk for you, and I have some additional I'm going to leave with Vicki to, to take the city manager's office so they can hand these out to citizens. But we really want to get the message out early. Our, our, our desire at the police department is to inform the public and have them comply with the law and operate their vehicles safely and not have to write any tickets. We understand that may not happen, but the, the quicker and the better we get the word out and have people understand what the law requires them to do, we feel that's a better, that's a better way to go. Yes, ma'am?
Are all of our school buses outfitted with the stop sign that comes out?
Yes.
Is that a state law or just...
Yes. Yeah, all of ours comply with, with the rules of state. In fact, and in the, and in the particular way the law's written now, just the testimony from a law enforcement officer or the, or the school bus driver that the bus was yellow, did have a stop bar, it's, it's presumed in court that it met all the criteria for the, for the lettering and the size, and it was, in fact, a school bus for the enforcement of the code section.
Any other questions? Last year, using it as a benchmark, how many violations do we typically have, say, in a given...
That's an excellent question. I don't know the answer to the question. We, I could look through that. That would be something I'd have to search. We did write, we did write quite a few, and, and there were some that, that sometimes in discretion of the officers were handled differently. Not, not, not every violation was written in summons, depending on the, the situation. But, but we do write them. We do get complaints throughout the school year. It's, it's pretty consistent that we do get complaints from bus drivers or citizens who observe that happen and then will call us and say, you know, would you put somebody there tomorrow morning in this area, because this is where we're seeing a violation occur? And then we do just that.
I know when With Creek Road was first widened, that that was a real hotspot for problems.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Cliff, I know that at first, a driver puts on yellow caution lights. Is there a distance that you're required, like, say you're within 50 feet of that bus when it, when the yellow caution light goes on?
Right.
Should you immediately stop?
But the caution lights to get your attention. It's when the stop, when the stop sign is extended and the bus comes to a stop.
So it's, it's just when it turns red that...
Yes, sir.
You should, so that, if you are so close that you go through the caution, that's no violation?
No, sir.
Okay.
Anything else?
If you have any more questions, please let me know. And again, I'll, I'll take the rest of my handouts, like the ones you have, and leave them with Vicki and, and Evie, and they'll be available in the city manager's office for any citizen who's interested in taking a copy with them. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the end of special presentations this evening, and some good ones there tonight. I'd like to open now the audience for visitors. If there's anybody here that would like to talk to council on any issue, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 28th, 2014.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any comments of council, questions? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Ehr.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we'll move into new business, and the first item under new business is a resolution author, approving the performance contract for the Colonial Behavioral Health Board for fiscal year 2015. Randy, how would you like to proceed? I see, I see they're here. They look like they're eager to talk.
Mr. Coe is here? We're pleased that he is here. This is one of those exercises we do with the state where we are required to, you are required to approve it. However, beyond that, Mr. Coe is here to provide you a brief summary of what they've been doing on our behalf and in our part of the region's behalf, and answer any questions that you may have with regard to it. And this, this relates to mental health services, substantive services, and the line. Mr. Coe?
Mr. Coe, thank you for coming, and let me tell you, even though we kind of, I kind of joking, they said, I can tell you, mental health in Virginia is a concern, I think, that should be shared by everybody. And what y'all do to protect it, to, to serve as that need is, is definitely needed. So I think we'd be pleased to hear from Colonial Services Board on, you know, anything that you have to tell us, even if there's things that the cities need to do to help.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate very much the opportunity to be here and cannot express enough the gratitude that we have for the support that Pecosin has offered to Colonial Behavioral Health over the years. We're in our 43rd year of existence, and Pecosin, I think, has been a part of that for 41 or 42 years and been a consistent and tremendous partner to us the entire time. I did want to let you know that in an effort to expand and grow the services that we're providing to the citizens of Pecosin and to those in Lower York County, but tonight, focus on Pecosin, we have, we have hired an individual a little less than a year ago by the name of Marcia O'Bremsky, who is a coordinator to work out of our office, we used to call the Grafton Office. We have now renamed it the York Pecosin Office for that, for the reason of an additional focus in this area. Marcia's job is to connect in the community, to find out what the needs are in the community on the ground locally, not out of Williamsburg, and to spend time with social services and law enforcement and all the above to help partner with you to expand services and have more individuals from Pecosin served in, in our area. And we're planning to, I think, two or three years ago, we had several of you were able to come out to our office and visit with us, and we enjoyed that visit. We intend to do that again here shortly to invite Mr. Wheeler, Ms. Wiggins, and members of council to come out and let's just have a, a talk about what we're, what we're seeing and what challenges we have and opportunities that we have that we may be able to partner together. We certainly are glad that we're dealing with a performance contract. The performance contract is the venue by which community services boards through local governments contract with the Commonwealth of Virginia to access state-controlled dollars. Those are the designated state general fund dollars, federal dollars that are, that go through our single state agency, and the authority and licensing for even Medicaid-funded There is a requirement that localities approve those. I will let you know, it may be to your relief, it may not be to your relief, but the regulations in the code have changed to require local governments to approve the performance contract only every biennium. So you would only have to do this once every two years, should you choose to. So, but you're welcome to approve it every year, because it gives me an opportunity to come down for, for one reason and to spend some, some face-to-face time with you. So I will let you know that if, everyone has read the paper, everyone has seen the news, everyone knows that, that mental health services and particularly emergency services are a tremendous focus across the country, but much of it has, has derived directly from experiences here in Virginia, particularly the tragedy in November in Bath County. We are actively engaged with our State Department, multiple state departments, in developing new protocols, working out new protocols, developing new, new options and new services to help make sure that the risk of those types of things happening in Virginia is absolutely minimized. No one's ever going to be able to keep bad things from happening. Something bad will happen again someday, but we don't want that to happen. We don't want that to be the thing. We don't want that sort of tragedy to take place again. So we are very actively engaged with that. We have, in the last couple of years, gotten very heavily engaged in some state leadership functions so that we're able to have a much greater voice in Richmond and beyond at this point, hopefully to represent Pecosin well. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. No one's ever going to be able to keep bad things from happening. Something bad will happen again someday, but we don't want that to happen. We don't want that to be the thing. We don't want that sort of tragedy to take place again. So we are very actively engaged with that. We have, in the last couple of years, gotten very heavily engaged in some state leadership functions so that we're able to have a much greater voice in Richmond and beyond at this point, hopefully to represent Pecosin well. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, council?
I have one question, and I see Cliff's not here anymore, but do you ever partner with the local police departments to help them with training on how to identify and be sensitive to situations?
Yes, we have one of the, there's a national model that was developed out of Memphis called the CIT model, Crisis Intervention Teams, and it is a 40-hour training curriculum designed specifically for law enforcement to learn how to recognize and intervene with persons they encounter with mental illness, to make sure that the right person gets the right service at the right time, to minimize incarceration of persons with mental illness, but also to reduce conflicts and altercations and all of those. And Pecosin's been a partner with us in that area, and we are currently working also on what's called an assessment center, which would be a place where law enforcement that have been CIT-trained would be able to bring someone that they've encountered in the community with mental illness. If they think they might need an assessment for civil commitment, they could actually bring them and actually could go back on the street on patrol and not have to sit there for hours while we try to find a bed and conduct the assessment. So Pecosin's been an integral part of that. All four of the jurisdictions we serve are part of that, as well as the College of William and Mary and the security at Colonial Williamsburg. So it's been a tremendous partnership, and we're very happy about that.
Is there a quarterly report or semi-annual report that you put out that the city gets a copy of to give us the numbers from Pecosin that you serve?
We did not, last year, produce an annual report because we had some staff cutbacks, and that was one of the areas that got cut back. We are working right now on a fiscal year 14 annual report, but those numbers are available right now. We could provide those to you anytime. Would be happy to send those to Mr. Wheeler and Ms. Wiggins.
Yeah, I would be interested in seeing that quarterly if we could. I mean, I don't want to add to your workload. If it's something that you readily have or if it's somewhere we can go to look it up, I'd love to see it.
That's not a challenge for us to do. We can do that, no problem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming here this evening, and again, thanks for everything that you do.
And thank you all for your support, once again.
All right, that is an item under new business, and there's a resolution associated with that. Is anybody prepared to make that motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the FY 2015 Performance Contract for Colonial Behavioral Health.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we approve that resolution approving that contract. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next item under new business is an ordinance adopting the 2012 International Building Codes. Do we need a presentation on this? This is basically a bookkeeping item.
This, as you'll note from the attached ordinance, the only changes are changing the 2009 reference to 2012. This is Virginia, the state of Virginia adopts statewide building code, which has us is underpinning the international codes that are referenced here. Mr. Somerset's here and can answer any question that you may have, but this is...
Well, Ken, if you come up to the podium, I'd like to say something else, and I appreciate it, and that's not a bad thing. One, I appreciate you bringing this, and I know that we just need to stay compliant with the state codes. But I also want to say to you that there's probably more accolades that this council receives from your service to the citizens, especially dealing with their flood insurance and all of those things. And I just wanted to, I know it's a little bit out of order, but I wanted to say thank you.
I appreciate it, sir.
We get a tremendous amount of feedback, and you are helping those citizens in the most important way, and that's one at a time. And what you do is definitely heard and definitely appreciated.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody have any questions about building codes?
Are there any substantive changes compared to what they've been there in the past?
No, sir. Nothing dramatic.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the code of ordinances at the city of Pecosin, Virginia, as it pertains to the building code.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we adopt the 2012 Uniform Statewide Building Codes. Questions or comments?
This is a mandate, for the most part.
Pretty much.
Yes.
If you want insurance, this is what you do. But it is just updating the building codes, and they're normally not that drastic.
Gene?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
We're mandated to pass this, okay, so we have no choice in it, but I think it's ridiculous. The city of Pecosin has to maintain international building codes, okay? The inference is these have to match what they would do in other countries, and I could give a hooch less what they do in France, okay, or California for that matter, okay? We don't have the same issues necessarily that they do, and the issues that Pecosin has to deal with are the ones we're often most concerned with. And so we'll pass it just because we're mandated to do it, okay, but I really don't like it at all.
I understand. Okay. All right, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance making additional appropriations for 2013, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, as you recall from your work session, there's only one item on the appropriation resolution ordinance for the evening, and that's the state highway money to go to this year's installment to the ditch piping budget, $41,630.
Okay. Any questions of the city manager on that? We just had a work session talking about uses for this type of funding. So anybody who's interested that missed the work session can definitely tune back in as it's rebroadcast to talk about the types of programs that we're talking about. Is there a motion to move forward with this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve that additional appropriation. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution accepting subdivision improvements for Rivers Edge subdivision. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I'll ask Debbie to come forward and speak to this, but Debbie, as you do come forward, I believe there's an error in the cover memo. We're talking about .24 miles of public street, are we not, and not .024?
The answer to that was yes.
All right. Thank you.
For everybody at home.
All right, the resolution is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. We are presenting to you, as a part of our normal development review process, the acceptance of a subdivision that we've been hoping to close out now for a number of years. This subdivision initially started in the early 2000s, and unfortunately, it got caught up with the crisis, the financial crisis, and it's taken a little longer to actually build out, and of course, it's not built out at this point. But we do have the subdivision improvements at a point that we feel very comfortable with. It has been constructed per the approved design, and we are now ready to accept the street system into our maintenance program so we can start receiving some state monies for it. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of council?
Seeing none, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, easy night.
Is there a motion that we accept this subdivision into the Pecosin road network system?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution accepting a certain street and subdivision improvements in the Rivers Edge subdivision into the city of Pecosin transportation system.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve this resolution. Questions or comments of council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, next item under new business, something that we're all extremely interested in and pleased with, and this is a resolution accepting a hazard mitigation grant entitled City of Pecosin Elevation of Ten Residential Structures and the associated funding for that. Randy, how would you like to proceed for this?
I think you did an excellent summary, sir. This is one of three grant packages that we've got that have been moving through the process for some time. Council members will recall, this is not dissimilar, although some of the rules have changed from the projects that were done and some of which were completed after my arrival here as city manager. This is the next round, and in order to get this through, this is a partnership between both the landowner, city government, state of Virginia, and federal government. And that, once you leave the city of Pecosin, it gets complicated. So the way that things happen is because of the partnership that we have with VDEM, and I'm pleased to point out Ms. Amy Howard, who is with us tonight. She is the person that helped get those grants from concept through both her agency and as a rep with FEMA, and she will be our rep all the way through. So I want to recognize her and tell you how much appreciate she's here.
Come up to... Thank you for coming, and thank you for all that you do for us in this regard. So I wanted to make sure that everybody got to see you, because what Randy said just frankly amazed me, is anything that the city, the state, and the federal government can do with the landowner, we've got to find your model because it's hard on everywhere else that we go. So obviously, you know some secrets.
No secrets. We had, under this grant, this was coming under 4072, which in FEMA terms was the earthquake. When we have a presidential declaration, the entire state is eligible to apply for sustainable projects, and being, it doesn't just have to be an earthquake project, it can be anything that sustains. And I contacted Evie and said we had money available, and then we started the process.
Thank you for keeping us up on the top of your list. One thing, could you let people know what VDEM is?
VDEM is Emergency Management, it's kind of the state's version of FEMA, and what we do, we, all types of things, hazardous spills, search and rescue, mainly what I do is hazardous mitigation. A part of hazardous mitigation happens because of public assistance funds. So when a disaster happens, FEMA gives a certain number of dollars to each state, and 20% of those funds goes to mitigation. Under mitigation, you're allowed to use 88% for projects, 7% for plans, and then we have what we call 5% projects. Under those type projects is stuff like reverse 911 systems, weather radios. So there's all type of funds whenever they become available. I usually contact a project manager within my area that I work in Virginia, and then they apply. And then there's a long process. It goes through a board at the state, and then it moves on to the federal government.
And I have one question. Where is your office?
Our office is in Richmond.
In Richmond.
Chesterfield.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to commend Evie. She's been our point person on our end on this grant, and she's the one that's holding it together, and we will look to her to continue to be the person at that center point for us going forward as well. And it may even be, before too long, we might even have some positive news on some more grants.
That's great.
So I know that VDEM is constantly working on that, so...
The reason I wanted you to talk about what y'all do is because I hear so many of our department managers, you talked about E911. You talked about all the things. There's really not one of our department heads that doesn't mention something in their conversation to us about VDEM. And I wanted to make sure that everybody understands when they're talking about that, that you're the face of that, so I appreciate it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this will be a tough one, but is there a motion that we adopt the resolution accepting this hazard mitigation grant?
I move that we adopt the resolution accepting the hazardous mitigation grant entitled City of Pecosin Elevation of Ten Residential Structures.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we accept that grant. Any further comments by council?
I take it these 10 homes have already been identified?
Are identified, in the grant.
Okay. All right, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and the last item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to the Wetlands Board. Somebody prepared with a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Wetlands Board with the following names inserted. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, the permanent position Lester E. Nagel, whose term will expire August 31, 2019. For the alternate, Mr. Lawrence J. Ritter, number is two, and two is here tonight. And for the Wetlands Board, Michael P. Hannah, whose term will expire August 31, 2019.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we fill those boards with those people. I will let Mr. Ritter know, most people, we just normally put them on there. You don't even have to show up. But we're glad that you're here tonight, and we appreciate your service, and it wasn't surprising to me to hear your name again. So thank you for all that you do. Further questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Any comments of the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things, real quick. One is to let you know, members of council, that we did send a letter to the 10 recipients on the grant list on Friday, alerting them of the status. So our next step in the very near future will be a sit-down with everyone again, but we're off and running. The other, and if you're going to speak to it, I can stop, but I was going to talk about the H-TAC public information meeting.
Go ahead, and I'll follow up on it.
For members of the public, staff, council members, and the public from the peninsula and the south side for that matter, if you are interested in learning more about the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, which is a new state political subdivision recently established by the General Assembly to deal with the expenditure of the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund tax revenues and some of the very large regional projects, the city of Pecosin is hosting an informational meeting on Wednesday. It will be at Pecosin High School from 4:00 to 7:00, and it's designed so that no one has to come from 4:00 to 7:00, but during that time, staff from the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, along with the chairman of the H-TAC, which is...
Mayor Krasnov.
Mayor Krasnov, as well as H-TAC member, Mayor Hunt, will be there and others to answer people's questions about what is this new organization, what are its authorities under code, what is its general revenue stream, and what are the projects that it's looking at initially as it begins its work. And this is envisioned to be the first of a series throughout Hampton Roads of meetings, and we're pleased as a community to help co-host their first informational meeting. public information meeting. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Councilman Vernal?
Just to note that in addition to thanking the lady from the state for getting the grant through for us, I know it took a lot of work on the part of local staff too, and certainly appreciate everybody who, who put in that effort and successfully got that, which will mean a lot to folks that really need their, their homes elevated. So thanks for everybody that did, got involved with that, appreciate it.
Okay, Councilman Green?
Just to remind everybody, tomorrow is the Food Bank at the Old City Hall from ten to one. It's being hosted tomorrow by Immious Baptist Church and the City Council. So I appreciate you guys volunteering to be there, and encourage everybody who's qualified to show up for the event.
Tell me again, buddy?
Ten to one, at the Old City Hall.
Okay, Councilman Ayer?
You'd like to reiterate what Dr. Vernal said, I didn't even know such a program existed, and I didn't know that, that we had such a program in Eevee and the state. People were always working behind the scenes in this city, and Eevee's always one working behind the scenes to make great things happen. That's just a great thing, so it's going to be ten very happy families. Also, we lose a lot of people in this, in this city as the city ages, and I lost two near, and we all did for that matter, two near and dear citizens with Kobe Watkins and, and today the passing Scott LaRusso. Thoughts and prayers to those families, and anybody else that lost a loved one.
Thank you very much. Bud?
No, just second comments, everything is finished.
Okay, Trace?
Um, I just wanted to thank Ms. Howard, Mr. Co., Ms. Chandler, and Officer Fox for coming tonight. And I also wanted to mention that tomorrow is the middle school fundraiser, PTO fundraiser, where if you drive the car, the, I don't want to give the wrong place, but the, the school earns money. So if you're available to go to the middle school and drive just around the circle between three and five, that would help the school tremendously.
Okay, that's great. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything.
I'd like to second the, the losses near and dear to the community. I will tell everyone at home, and Mr. LaRue was a, was a longtime educator down here. Mr. Watkins, one of our last few remaining World War II veterans, I won't say the last, but one of the last, and, but certainly one of the, the most active up until his passing, including the, the last ceremony here, always here with the American Legion, and a, a great man, and I will miss him dearly. I'll remind council that, a couple of things that are out there on the forefront. I'll brush on H-R-TAC, I want the citizens to kind of listen just for a second, just so that you understand sort of what we're talking about. H-R-TAC is, as Randy has talked about, it's a interesting political subdivision of the state. I won't, it's, it's going to do great things, and I, I stress that, it is going to do great things with transportation, and it is well-funded. Mayors who serve on that, which is every mayor in the whole Hampton Roads region, did not place themselves on this commission, they were appointed to it. They did not put this tax in place, but they are there to help prioritize those projects. And if anybody wants to fathom the amount of dollars per year, we're talking about, about $280 million per year that this tax is generating, which allows you to take on billion-dollar projects such as Hampton Roads bridge tunnels, or third crossings, or high-rise bridges. But I'll tell you that I'm most pleased that the first project that they're doing, and the, the one that is, that has gained the momentum and the actual funding, is I-64 heading to Fort Eustis. And so I will tell you that, that changes to transportation will come, whether we agree with the, the way it was put together or not, I can tell you that at, at the end, the local folks will prioritize and they will move forward, and they are all, they all want to do that. And again, they were appointed, they, we didn't set the tax, but we will certainly do what we need to do to get transportation moving, which has been very difficult for the state. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we're going to try and make up that shortfall in the Hampton Roads region. And speaking of the state, I think they came out with their latest budget, their revenue projections, and the revenue projections for the state were down significantly, almost a billion dollars, I think it's eight-hundred-and-fifty-some million dollars, and we're just barely into the fiscal year. So what I would tell council to do is brace, stand by, schools are, are doing the same thing. It's going to be a challenging year. It was a challenging budget year to start with, and that was with their old projections. So we're going to have to fight for every dollar that we get. I'm sure that there will be some, some tough discussions coming up, and we're just going to have to, to move through it as smartly and as cohesively with our state legislators as we can. They've been dealt a, dealt a hand that is, is unmentionable, and I, I hope that they will find what the core services of government are, so that the same conversation that we're, we're facing in the city. And finally, I will tell, you know, we've had some interest, not, and not good interest, but we've had some interest from Fish and Wildlife patrolling Cow Island, and we did address a letter, I don't know, I think it went out for general distribution to the council, if not, please get them a copy of that. But they have been ticketing our citizens out there on Cow Island, even though it's inappropriately, what I, what I believe is inappropriately marked and not maintained very well. But it, it's one of those things that I think we'll be talking about in the very near future and as a council, and we'll be trying to make some headway with our federal legislators on that particular subject. And that's all I've got this evening. Did I miss anything?
Yes, sir.
If not, then we have a closed session this evening, and that closed session is, if I can find my agenda again, pursuant to Section 2.237, 11A, 3 and 8 of the Code of Virginia to discuss acquisition of real property and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, and that's a contract. So if somebody's prepared to make a motion, are we going to closed session?
A move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made, and second, we go to closed session. Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Very much, we'll go to closed session. Back shortly.